Good morning. You're up for the Crawford County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 14th, 2021. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance with Commissioner Wiederspan.
Good morning. Our pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Any approval of minutes from the meeting on March 24th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Any approval of minutes from the work session on April 7th, 2021?
I make that motion.
Second.
Let's probably move in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. And approval of payment of bills, the amount of $11,861,022.43 for the period ending April 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
No executive session? Anyone for public comment?
No.
Thank you. We'll start with the do operation. Trevor, just unmute the mic when you want, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Trevor.
I'm here today to ratify the State Offenders Supervision Fund Agreement renewal. This is a one-year renewal for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021. The state contract commenced on July 1st of 2017 and runs through June 30th of 2022. That is a five-year contract. The Pennsylvania parole board will return to Crawford County the offenders' supervision fees that were received by the Department of Re-.
Karen Borkin.
Is now joining.
For the period of May 1st, 2020 to April 30th of 2021.
I make that motion.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, Mr. Trevor.
Thanks, Trevor.
Do you have an operation? Morning, Molly.
Morning, Molly.
Morning, Molly.
It's green, it's all.
There we go.
I'm here to request the purchase and installation of the electronic ZK access control system for the front and rear entry doors to the juvenile probation department. This includes a one-year maintenance coverage on all parts and labor. The system allows us to have keyless entry and badge access, and the badges will also be incorporated with the judicial and courthouse systems to only have one badge. The purchase and installation amount is $3,998, and the funds are being transferred from a previously approved budgeted item for the laptops, and those were instead covered by the CJ grant.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Public defender's office? You don't look like Mario.
No. No, my schedule is third up.
Okay.
That's right. I'm here to request approval of a five-year subscription to the West Pennsylvania Criminal Justice and Proview. That gives us both the hard copy and the electronic. It's gone, it used to be a nice handy little one book that had most everything we needed for criminal, and it's expanded into two books now, so it's not as handy as it used to be. So it'd be nice to have it accessible on our phones, on laptops, whatever. So that's getting both. This is actually cheaper because we've had seven sets of the books before. Because we combined the two part timers into one full timer, we're getting six sets of both for less than we were paying for the seven sets of this hard copy.
Yeah, I make that motion.
Full second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye. And thank you, Suzanne.
Thanks, Holly.
Judicial Center meeters?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tim.
Good morning, Tim.
I'm looking for a final approval on a one-year contract for our UPS unit at the Judicial Center. The renewal cost per year is $5,229. It would be a $135.40 increase, and the current contract expires this year of April, on April 18th, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, appreciated, gentlemen. Thank you.
Crawford County Sheriff?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dave.
I'm here to get approved and sign a contract with Perimedium, which will allow and provide online application submission and credit card payments for license to carry. This service will be provided at no cost to the county, but it'll charge, it'll charge them $5, a fee of $5 to the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Commissioners.
One second, Tim.
Dave Howard is now exiting.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Tim.
I'm here to ratify the network installation project for the court's second floor from the various vendors below for the total amount of $27,386.19.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
And the last item is to approve the purchase of the three-year SOFOs Computer Security Renewal Contract from Candorus for $112,685.76.
I make that motion.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Crawford County Sheriff, Christine Kucia.
Good morning.
Good morning, Christine.
I'm here to ask for ratification for the approval of the investment committee's recommendation of the 3/23 dated 3/23/2021.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
And secondly, I'm here to ask for ratification for approval of the purchase of three CD from Mercy Point State Bank in a total amount of $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,910,601.72 at a rate of .5% for 24 months. And there's no early withdrawal penalty on this. Breakdown of CD amounts is $1 million, $1 million, and then the $910,610.72. It's a $1.72.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Can I make here a center?
Hi, this is Leanne.
Good morning.
I'm asking to ratify the consulting contract with Affinity Health Services.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Also to approve the preventative maintenance contract with Cleveland Brothers for the annual maintenance on our generator with a total yearly cost of $1,596 to be paid from maintenance service agreements, and this is a budgeted item.
I make that motion.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Leanne. Public safety?
Thank you.
Mr. Beridge? Good morning, everyone. One second. She can leave a second.
Leanne Deck is now exiting.
This morning, we'd like to ask for approval for Lake City Power to conduct a load bank test on the public safety building's generator at a cost of $750. This is recommended to be completed every year.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Thank you. We'd also like your approval of an agreement with the Pennsylvania Governor's Center for Local Government Services, providing consultants to Crawford County to work with the fire and EMS task forces at no cost to Crawford County.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you. And we also ask for your approval for the creation of the additional 15th full-time 911 telecommunicator position.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Correctional facility?
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jack.
First off, I'd like to approve to enter into a yearly subscription with Onzal. Onzal helps manage personnel staffing, quickly alert staff with enhanced notifications, saves time in assistant filling vacancies. The yearly fee is $700 and one-time, reoccurring fee of $95, and this is based upon the amount of people you put in the dab base. Total cost would be $795, and this is a budgeted item.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
All right, second item is to approve paying $2,000 to City of Meadville for 2021 range fees.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Okay, my last item is to approve the purchase of AEDs and CPR first aid training materials to recertify and certify the CCCF staff. This is so we can also do in-house training. Total cost for the training materials is $3,855.69, and I would like to find the funding to be paid through the commissary account.
Make the motion.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Jack.
County meetings?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mark.
I'm asking approval to pay an invoice for the courthouse remodeling project, specifically the new finance office, in the amount of $21.33.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Asking approval to pay an invoice for the courthouse remodeling project, specifically the new human resources office, in the amount of $14.43.
So moved.
Second. Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay an invoice for the courthouse remodeling project, the window replacement project, in the amount of $177.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Asking approval to ratify the payment of an invoice to Steve Stats Painting. This is for painting for the new finance office and the new third-floor conference room for $1,475.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Asking approval to ratify the payment of an invoice to LB Water Services. This is for a fire hydrant and gate valve replacement at the fairgrounds for $4,169.95.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark Allen is now exiting.
Hi, the planning office.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Zach.
First item this morning is to request ratification for a submission to the State Facility Closure Transition Program under the Department of Community and Economic Development for $100,000 to deploy broadband services at the Keystone Industrial Park.
So moved.
Second with a question.
Probably move a second. With a discussion.
Let's hear it. Are we not increasing that to the 138?
So our application was for the 100. The state increased it to the 138. I was planning on adjusting to the 138 for the contract whenever it was received.
Okay, so you want to keep the motion still, the ratification at the 100?
Since we made it for 100, I thought it would be appropriate, but Keith wants us, recommends to do it differently. We can change it.
Great, fine, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Next, we're seeking approval of an invoice for the Titusville Herald in the amount of $793 for advertising for fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Application First Public Hearing for the City of Titusville. This is paid for out of the CDBG program.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Next, we're seeking approval of required plans and documents for the county's CDBG program. Those plans include the county's 504 plan, citizen participation plan, language access plan, and section three plan.
I make that motion.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
We're seeking approval for a section three resolution identifying Jenny Tompkins in the planning office. It's the county's section three officer for fiscal year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
We're also seeking approval of a fair housing resolution identifying Jenny Tompkins as well as the county's fair housing officer for fiscal year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
We're also asking for approval for an amendment to the cooperation agreement between Crawford County and the City of Titusville to include administrative services and services for the city's 2019 fiscal year CDBG contract to our existing agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
And the last item this morning is seeking approval on a sub-recipient agreement with the Crawford Area Transportation Authority. This is a partnership for the county's rural family and workforce transit program. The program will be funded through the county's 2019 CDBG allocation. I apologize if I was mistaken. It's 2019.
2019?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Zach.
Human services?
Hi, this is Sue.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Sue.
The first item is I'm seeking approval for the MATP final allocation for fiscal year 1920. The final amount is $823,500 and is based on the fiscal year 1920 final cost reconciliation report and based on actual expenses. Ridership was down in fiscal year 1920 due to the pandemic and teleservices, and there's no county match on these funds.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
I'm seeking ratification for payment to the Center for Family Services for reimbursement for fund distribution for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This is for the time period 317 to 32521. The total amount is $97,804.5, and there is no county match on these funds.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
I'm seeking approval for payment to Crawford County Commissioners for the 2021 indirect costs for CYS based on 2019 actual expenditures as calculated through MAXIMUS. The total payment is $255,249, and also payment to the Crawford County Commissioners for 2021 indirect costs for mental health ID based on 2019 actual expenditures, less personal care boarding home renovation maintenance costs. Total payment $176,500.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeking approval for the mental health provider enrollment revalidation applications for the following services: Lended Case Management, Mental Health Emergency Services, Administrative Case Management, and Submitter for MHCCR Palms Provider. Every five years, we're required by medical assistance to revalidate our medical assistance promised ID number in order to continue to provide the above services.
So moved. Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Seeking approval for a training agreement with Sprout Center for Emotional Growth and Development for infant mental health training. This training was offered in March with great success and will be offered again in June. This is a virtual training over four days. The total cost is $4,500, paid with community mental health services block grant funds, and there's no cost to accounting.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
I'm seeking to ratify fiscal year 2021 CYS JPO contract amendment with Family Services of Northwest Pennsylvania. This amendment is increasing the contract maximum for intensive family based on current usage. The increase is $11,971.8 with the county share being $2,394.22. This amendment also will increase the contract amount for MST based on current usage. This service maximum will increase by $4,000 with the county share being 200.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
I'm seeking approval for fiscal year 2021 professional contract amendment with Bliss Nutrition Services in order to add special instruction and special instruction behavior to the contract. These are state-set rates. Both rates are set at $28.83 per 15 minutes, and the cost to the county is $2.88 per 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
And finally, I'm seeking approval for a fiscal year 2021 professional contract amendment with the Titusville Area Hospital for the delivery of mobile psychiatric nursing and wellness visits. The unit rate had been changed in keeping with the recent rate adjustment awarded by Beacon Health Options for the same service. The total contract maximum will stay the same. The new rate is $38 per 15 minutes for both services effective 4/121. The cost to the county is $2.03 for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
My name is?
Good morning.
Good morning, Stephanie.
I'm seeking approval for purchase requisitions totaling $3,000. These were detailed at last week's work session.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
I'm also seeking ratification for purchase requisitions totaling $774,771.95. These were detailed at last week's work session.
So moved.
Second. Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Keith, I think you have the resolution, correct?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the county has a 2006 Ford F-350 truck that it is no longer utilizing, but learned that the City of Titusville does have a use for it. And so this is a resolution to transfer that vehicle to the City of Titusville for its continued use.
I'll make that motion.
I will, second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have some new hires, new hires and transfers in the packet.
I'll make a motion. We approve the request of new hires and employee transfers. It's detailed in our packet today.
I will second that.
Let's probably move a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saw.
Aye.
Wiederspan.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Just for some upcoming events and information, the next work session is April 21st. There is a full meeting will be upstairs on the 28th. The phone will be available, but no Skype due to the internet access. It'll be in courtroom three because we have election poll worker training, I believe, that week.
Courtroom one.
Courtroom one, did I say? Sorry. What did I say?
Courtroom three.
Well, hey, three's nice. I mean, you're all nice. Courtroom one, it'll be the place where other people are at, that's good. And then May 5th, and then May 12th. We'll do some commissioner comments, and I'll go last, but Commissioner Saw?
Just want to again ask and let folks know that we are still in need of poll workers for the May 18th primary election. Perfect opportunity for you to spend the day with voters and others who are interested in the election process. So again, if you have an interest, I would greatly encourage you to please reach out to our Election Voter Services office. Call them at 814-333-7307. We cannot perform our service in the election without your help, so please consider being a poll worker that day. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiederspan?
I'd just like to, I'd like to thank the people of Crawford County for doing a pretty good job. Our numbers for new COVID cases for the last couple of weeks have been either single digits or low teens, somewhere in between there each day. So keep up the good work, and COVID's still out there, so keep up the good work.
Okay, and I would like to end the meeting here with a couple of proclamations. We have a guest from AB. Would you like to come to the podium, please? Come on up and just introduce yourself. If you wouldn't mind, just tell everybody a little bit about AB, if you wouldn't mind.
Good morning. My name's Rita Preston. I'm the Public Relations Officer with the Crawford County Chapter of AB of Pennsylvania. AB stands for Alliance of Bikers Aimed Towards Education, and I just misspoke. It's toward, not towards. That's very important when you look us up. We are, as a chapter, all about educating the public. We want motorcycle safety. We want everyone safe on the highways. We are very active with lobbying in Harrisburg for safety measures in the legislature, not just for motorcycles, but for off-road to build four-wheel vehicles and working well with the four-wheelers and 18-wheelers and so on on the highways. This is our chapter coordinator, Scott Haley. Would you like to add anything?
You're doing a pretty good job.
Thank you, thank you. So we thank you for having us here this morning.
Sure, I'll read this for you, and then we'll present it to you. So the county of Crawford proclaims that whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of Crawford County, and whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of the county be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of AB of Pennsylvania, where the Alliance of Bikers Aimed Towards Education, as you said, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in the high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in the county, and whereas all motorcyclists should join AB of Pennsylvania and actively promote the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens, and whereas the motorcyclists of Pennsylvania have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national, state, and community charitable organizations, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within Crawford County and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Therefore, we, the Commissioners of Crawford County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in recognition of many years of AB of Pennsylvania and registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continuing role Pennsylvania serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do for us. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a great day and be safe on the highways.
Thank you. And the other proclamation is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Mr. Beridge, could you come back to the podium for a second? I'll put you on the spot. You mentioned the other day the number of calls that your telecommunicators answer, 911 calls. Could you just give us a small summary of that for us for the proclamation?
Based on 2020, which is probably a low year actually because of the pandemic, our phones rang over 100,000 times last year. Thirty-two thousand, a little over 32,000 times that was a direct call from 911 lines. So our folks answered the call day and day night, around the clock. They're busy. So over 37,000 911 calls in our county alone.
Thank you. And while you're there, I just wanted, I had Brittany from HR give me a list so someone knows. Just for our, for our employees, and we, a big thank you to these people, Karen Hahn, Cheryl Simmons, Chris Simmons, Sabrina Copeland, Michael Betts, Jen Artman, Justin Shallow, Kirk Dennis, Jeffrey Wilson, Andrew Youngs, Josh Manuel. You can be his up later for taking him away from you, sorry. Paul Atkins, Michelle Provost, Dustin Taggart, Elizabeth Bell, Paula Householder, Emily Baum, and Victoria Gallow. Please tell them that we thank them for their service to us and all they do for us. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 11th through the 17th, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Crawford County Emergency Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single viral link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single viral link for our police officers and firefighters and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Crawford County 911 Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be resolved that the commissioners of Crawford County declare the week of April 11th through the 17th, 2021, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Crawford County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thanks again, Greg, and we'll give this to you and pass it along. Again, give them everything. Thank you, Greg. And I would just like to add to that that I listen to a lot of the guys that have worked there for a lot of years, and one thing that Greg can attest to this is they're listening to a lot of bad stuff, and there's a lot of mental health challenges for dispatchers who suffer through the years of dealing with tough calls. And as a paramedic myself, I've seen a lot of things, but there's something about hearing a lot of things that makes their job very difficult. And I always think it's more of a challenge, people think it is. It's a very difficult job. Greg has a challenge finding people to want to do the job because it does have some challenges with it, so we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, you have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
We are adjourned. Thank you.